So we're going to get started. Thanks, everybody, for coming this evening. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, July 8th, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM. And I bet they're about to tell me, yep, my mic is on, so good. Yep. Beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We will begin by receiving any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under the agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak tonight?
I'm only on my card.
Okay. We'll wait on you. If you're the only, if you're the, if you're the-
I've got my name on the piece of paper.
Yes, Ms. Foreman, if you're the only person, then I think we're good to go. That's mainly just to keep everybody in track if there's a handful of folks. I gave you special discompensation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, I will apologize in, in, in advance that I haven't done all my homework.
If you could, by the way, just for the people that watch this later, if you could state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Foreman. I live in Friendswood, and I really love what you're doing about really being proactive about the tree ordinance and trying to really preserve the trees that we have here because it's just such an asset in Friendswood and really adds to why we live here. But getting to the nuts and bolts, the one thing that I found in your tree survey was it doesn't protect against someone who knows they're going to submit for a permit or dispensation from the city and goes and cuts down all their trees and then submits. So I don't know what you, what the real remedy is, or if there's something that you can maybe backdate that to. You know, we want to know what, what's been happening on this lot in the past six months prior to this submission. But I do think that all of the developers I've ever worked at would look at this and go, well, we've got to cut down all the trees before we put our paperwork in. So I don't know if there's a way to address it, but if there is, I think that would be a good thing to consider.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you very much for what you did.
Yeah, good comment. We'll, it's on our agenda tonight to discuss that ordinance. Perfect. Okay, seeing no one else speaking this evening, we will move on. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting held on Thursday, June 10th, 2021?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Okay. Next on our agenda are action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our only action item this evening is consideration and possible action regarding the election of a chairperson and vice chairperson. Are there any nominations for chairperson?
I nominate Joe Matringa.
I second that motion.
I second that motion also.
Anyone else that wants to nominate someone different? Okay. Okay. The candidate will be voted on in the order, well, never mind, don't say that because there's only one. All those in favor of candidate of Joe Matringa for chairman, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
I guess I'm going to say aye as well, so unanimous. Thank y'all very much. And now we move to vice chairman, vice chairperson, sorry. Yeah. So is there any, are any nominations for vice chairperson?
I nominate Richard Sassen.
Any other nominations? Then all those in favor of Richard Sassen as the vice chairperson, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Shows to be unanimous. You did vote for yourself?
I did.
Okay, perfect. I was looking past, I was looking past. All right. Okay, next we have three discussion items on our agenda. We'll start with the discussion regarding the proposed amendments to, amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 8IF, preserving trees and to amend the tree mitigation requirements. Becky?
Tom, do you want to start?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll give a few notes real quick. Just for, for, some of this was repeated from our last meeting, but basically what our subcommittee started with was our, our current tree ordinance, looked at that, then we went to the City of League City and City of Pearlands ordinances, compared the three, and we found that, I think we made a good compromise between, between those. Actually, our first pass, we found to be very onerous, a bit too extreme, so we pared that back and now have limited that to class one and class two trees. There are a lot of trees that just are not worth somebody paying to cut down, put it that way. The, the other thing that's added is we are requiring a tree survey for, for all developments now. And then there is also a credit available for, for the mitigation of, what's the word I'm looking, unwanted trees. So invasive trees. There we go. Becky?
Uh, yes, sir. So I guess just to, the red lines were in y'all's backup material along with some other information. So to hit kind of the highlights of the red lines, like Tom said, we do have a tree survey, which has always been a requirement. You have to submit it either at, during plating or site plan. So there's a couple of different opportunities to catch it. And commercial properties cannot do any kind of site work without a permit, so that would catch those. Residences do not. A residential lot, if you would like to prune your trees, chop your trees down, there, there is a minimum, it's one tree per lot. But most residential people like to keep their trees, so it's not, not normally an issue.
And if there's an HOA, they may be rules part of the HOA.
Yes, that would be in addition to the city requirement. So basically what we did was we, we tightened up our requirements for a tree survey to say who can do it, what needs to be included, and then the information provided on the tree survey is very clear and concise. That way, the developer knows what they have to mitigate for, the commission knows what they're looking at, what they're being mitigated for. So really, that's just administrative. It's not any kind of, it's not really anything of substance that was changed. The-
Let me ask, is the tree survey required when, when they're doing development on the property or when the property is sold?
Uh, we do not-
This is a question that was asked earlier.
So the city is not informed of property sales, so it would be any type of development. They have to have a-
Only development.
Yes, they have to have a plat or a site plan. Prior to that, they're not allowed to do anything on the property without approval. So if a commercial property owner was out cutting down trees, then that would be a code enforcement issue.
So it would be a violation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so that, that is currently addressed. So one of the new changes is to offer credit for the removal of invasive species because we found that invasive trees hurt the good trees that we do want. So we saw some other cities offer credit for that and thought that was a good, good thing to add in. We have allowed the commission to approve alternate landscape plans. So the ability for the commission to approve alternate plans is in several sections in our zoning ordinance. This specific section is just for tree mitigation. This isn't for landscaping requirements, it's just for the protection and the mitigation of trees. And that was not in there. So this gives the commission the ability, if a property owner, say, has a very large tree taking up the corner of their property, if they want to keep that tree, then y'all would have the latitude to lessen some of the additional landscape requirements because we would have, rather have one 40-year-old tree than eight brand-new little saplings. So that's just to give y'all a little bit more flexibility. Our current code requires mitigation based on the number of trees. So right now, it's one for one. If you take out a 30-inch tree, you put back one 3-inch tree. So the proposed language is going to be based on caliber inches, which is how the other cities do it. So if you take out 30 inches worth of tree, whether it's one tree, two trees, you replace with 30 inches of trees. And instead of a 3-inch caliber tree, they're going to need to replace it with either a four, six, eight, or larger. So the intent of the subcommittee-
And the four, six, or eight is depending on-
Depending on the size that was taken out. The subcommittee basically is going for quality over quantity. There's no point in having a whole bunch of little tiny sapling, you know, for lack of a better word, trash trees. We'd rather have a handful of good quality, you know, shade providing canopy-type trees. So that's, that's the intent. That's kind of the route that we went. There's a couple other changes in there. We did include a flat rate payment for tree mitigation, so some sites, they're just not suited for the replacement of all the trees onsite, especially heavily wooded properties. So they have the options of either planting those trees offsite, or they can pay a fee into a tree fund. And so that fee, we made it $250 per caliber inch. So that plays into our next slide, actually. We had the, your backup, there was a pretty detailed tree comparison of what it would cost people on a couple of specific properties. The slimmed-down version is up on the screen. So right now, the big hot topic property is the 501 South Friendswood. That's where the old parsonage was. There's two fairly large oak trees that were kind of the main concern, but there were also a lot of other smaller trees on that property that required mitigation as well. So under our current code, he would have to replace 25 trees with 3-inch trees. And that breaks down to, on the, on the low end, if he had to pay the fee, it would be So the subcommittees-
That's not the cost of the trees, that's the mitigation payment.
That would be the mitigation payment. And it's on a low end on that one. Right now, our code requires the developer give us three bids for tree replacement, and we take the average of that. And it's, it's just kind of hard to regulate. So the flat rate seems to be the way that all of our sister cities are doing it. So if you look at City of Pearland and City of League City, their caliber inches and their payment for trees are pretty significant. So the subcommittee kind of went with a halfway point. Our proposed language, if they had to replace the trees onsite that were taken down, they would replace 330 caliber inches worth of trees so that, and they can do that, some trees onsite, some trees offsite, they can pay into the fund, they can do a lesser number of very large trees or an increased number of smaller trees. So there's any combination that they now have to work with. It gives more flexibility for them as well.
And there is a, based off tree size, there's also a multiplier.
Yes.
So it's not just, it's not just 30 inches, that's what you've got to replace, it's 30 inches times one and a quarter, or whatever the, the calculation is for that given diameter tree.
Yes.
And the intent of the multiplier is what?
Discourage the removal of the larger trees.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Any tree greater than 36 inches, the multiplier, it's, they have to replace it with 130%. So the intent is we want them to keep the bigger trees. And if they can't keep the trees, they don't want the trees, then the mitigation requirement is higher than what we currently have in place.
Walk me through, you said your first pass through this, you thought you took a step too far.
Yeah.
Where would we have been on 501 if you took that path? And I mean-
Becky may have it with her right now, but I think it was in the 300, $400,000 range.
So clearly, we went far.
Yes, our current ordinance requires mitigation for any tree, not any types of, not specific trees, but any tree 12 inches or greater. So that's, I mean, U-trees, rain trees, things that people don't generally keep as-
Invasive trees even?
Yeah, so- Well, one thing, I'm sorry, Becky.
No, no, go ahead.
But one thing too that Becky put together for us that, that really made a lot of sense to me is she, she, there's a further breakdown of this right here, but it's too big for the slide. But if you really looked at what 1401 South Friendswood would have, would have paid on the, the original plan we had, it would have made development of that lot not feasible.
Because it had so many trees.
It had so many pine trees and, oh, what were the other ones? Euphon?
Pine, juniper.
Juniper. They had a bunch of pine and juniper trees. So to make them replace all those, it was an extreme number. So that's why we were talking about quality over quantity. We'd rather have the, the good hardwood trees than just trees for tree's sake.
And just to clarify, because I'm, I'm not sure if we specifically stated it tonight, the balance we're striking is incentive to not take out trees versus damaging a potential landowner or property owner from being able to market their property and do the things that they want as a property rights.
Yeah, so we still want to encourage development, right?
Yes.
But at the same time, we want to protect trees, in particular, certain species of trees and sizes of trees. And, and I think we've done a pretty good job of doing that.
I, I agree you have. I just want to make sure we put that on the, on the record. Now, on the 14, I'm sorry, am I cutting anyone off? On the 1401, we only moved 2,000. So is that really an example of one where the number of trees removed were of the non-desired kinds and there wasn't a large impact to the trees that we do want to keep? That's an example of that case?
Correct.
Yes, these are kind of the two extremes. The 501 South Friendswood, they had two large oaks, and then they actually had, I think, three, four other, you know, oaks, pecans, things like that, that they, they were still pretty large, they're just not front and center, so. Versus 1401 that had a ton of less desirable trees. So if we, when we were talking about our first pass was too onerous, it, it would have killed 401 South Friendswood.
Sure.
So I've said this before, I really like the table. It, it brings it front and center, and it points out the different ways of doing the equations and what kind of results you get. I think that lets you rationalize where you are. Going back to what Flight said over here, the, the concern I have is the one that was brought up before, and I just wanted to run that completely to ground. So if I'm a commercial property owner and I have an empty lot that has trees on it, I am not allowed to cut down my own trees?
No.
How would I go about, if I had a sick or diseased tree, what would I do? Would I apply to the city and ask them for permission or something of that sort? Or how, how do you, how do you make this actually work?
Yes, you would need to get a development permit. If it's unplatted land, then you would do a development permit.
Even just to cut down your own dead tree?
Technically, yes.
So we had a recent example, right, where there was a commercial business that had a lightning strike of a large oak tree? What did they have to do to replace that?
He contacted me and asked me what he needed to do. So, I mean, luckily, that's one of, a well-informed commercial developer. There's not any 100% foolproof way of stopping or catching somebody from cutting down a tree. I can just say, in the past, commercial properties that have gone in and started clearcutting, they, they are caught very quickly because we do get a lot of phone calls on things like that.
Good. I hadn't appreciated that was the rule, that I, as opposed to a, you know, single-family residential owner, if you own commercial property, you're not allowed to cut down your own trees without going through the city and negotiating out something associated with that. And so that would be our protection against what was brought up beforehand.
The development permit we use for clearing and grubbing, so even if they want to go in and clear the underbrush and things like that, we just, either they, you know, need to turn in the tree survey at that time, or we inform them that you're going to need a tree survey, like, don't remove any of your trees. But sometimes they need to clear and grub in order to do a tree survey because the, you know, it's so heavily wooded underneath, the surveyors can't get to the trees.
Right.
So the development permit is a minimal fee and we just-
So it makes sense, if you're not developing the property, nothing's there. You're not going to spend a lot of money taking out trees unless you really got some kind of plan going forward.
Right.
And, and then we have the eyes of Friendswood upon you here to kind of protect the, from, from unwanted consequences.
But if somebody was to do it anyway, then it becomes, sounds like it becomes a code enforcement issue.
And then, of course, you can always measure stumps and say you did this, and we have penalties and all that kind of bad stuff, so. Okay, thank you, that, that helps.
Kathy?
Well, I have a question, but it's not specifically pertaining to this. It has to do with paragraph seven of tree protection. It talks in there about if a replacement tree or a tree identified as protected fails to survive a minimum of five years-
Yes.
-and the property owner has to replace that?
Correct.
The question is, five years from when? Is that from when the survey is conducted? Is that from when the zone-
That is five, five years from the time of the certificate of occupancy, the final inspection basically, because that's the point where the city goes out to verify the landscaping. So if they plant a mitigation tree, when Aubrey or I go out there and do the final inspection, part of that is to check the landscaping. So that five years would start then.
Against the design that was approved.
Yes.
Okay. And in that same paragraph, it talks about that, if the tree fails to survive, then the property owner shall replace the tree within 120 days. And then it says, which has a minimum, minimum caliber of four inches?
Yes.
Is that minimum caliber the replace, the size of the replacement? Or is it defining the type of tree that would have to be replaced?
So it is replacing the tree, let me make sure we put the right language in here that we talked about.
So if the protected tree was, for example, a 24-inch caliber tree that was protected that failed to survive?
Well, this is not for those. These are for mitigation replacement trees, so they're not going to be that large.
Uh, it says if a replacement tree or a tree identified as protected. So there are some that, that can be identified-
Oh, okay.
-protected. So it could have been one of the trees that was identified in the design as being protected.
Correct, correct.
We'll say, my example, the 24-inch tree, caliber tree, it does not survive the construction or what, or what have you, within the five years, say a year later. Does this minimum define what it has to be replaced by? Or is it say, because it's more than four inches, it must be replaced? I read, I can read it both ways, the way it's phrased.
The intent is if it's a, well, I guess we can clean that up. The intent is whatever tree did not survive, you have to replace it with whatever that requirement was. So if the requirement was a 4-inch tree, then you have to replace a 4-inch tree. If it was an existing 24-inch tree, then you need to replace 24 inches as stated previously in the ordinance, but-
I believe, then we should probably clean that up because I read that, can read that both ways, the way it's currently phrased.
Okay, we can vet it through the city attorney again. Thank you.
Because in the end, the developer's the one that designates something as protected, correct?
Correct.
I mean, they could have taken it down and fallen within our ordinance.
Yes.
Right? So, okay.
Paid a larger amount, right, for it? But then if it's-
Yeah.
If it's replaced with a 4-inch, that's a lesser amount, I think, for replacement than a 24-inch, which would have the factor built into it.
Yeah, good point.
And it would be more than a 4-inch. So that's why it's a little bit confusing.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch.
On your note, is it worth putting in something about, from, from time of occupancy on here? How do you feel about that? Since it's, since you are confused and other people might be as well.
Well, it doesn't, it's not specific, and maybe it's identified elsewhere and I missed it, but here I didn't recognize where the minimum of five years was referenced to, so it's poss, it might help to have that there as well.
I think we can just add the clarification that it's five years from issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
I like that.
Yeah, that just makes it clean. Good, good catch. Anything else? Mark?
Two things, just thinking ahead, so I obviously support the things in here for the exception for single-family residential dwelling purposes, right? So that, we're clearly saying homeowners. But for zone change requests, by the time a zone change request gets to us to change from SFR to mixed use or anything others that would fall underneath this category, are there other things we need to go and consider that we didn't think about? I don't know that answer to this, this is a lightbulb moment for me, so. Because by the time that zone change request gets to us, someone could have cleared their property and made it prime for commercial development. Maybe that's something we can't protect, or maybe we should not protect for that. But it's a consideration that I want to throw on the table. And then the other thing that made me think, or that line of thought had me consider was one about, what about any future development that the city might want to take on, like a major thoroughfare or Galveston County? Our text doc comes in, obviously, they've got much more power, but are there things that we need to do to protect any of our future thoroughfares or boulevards that some of these nice trees might be targets for? So I don't have an answer for either one of those, but something maybe for the subcommittee to, to consider.
Uh, we, I mean, we can talk about it, as, for the zone changes, I can't think of a way to protect against that. We have no, we wouldn't have any knowledge or recourse-
Yes.
-in that instance. I would say any property that's going to change from residential to commercial would generally be a larger piece of property, and I, I think that's just going to kind of be on a courtesy type. If we see a bunch of work happening on a residential property that could be becoming a commercial piece of property, staff would just have to try and be proactive. I don't, we can talk with Mary Kay, but I, I don't really know how to put something like, how to codify something like that.
I'm not even sure if I would support it if you proposed it, so it's just me making a loophole.
No, it's a good, good catch.
And then as far as like city properties and stuff, we do have an ordinance that says we follow our own ordinances. So the, the codes would apply to the zoning districts, not to who the developer is, if that makes sense.
It does. Just two thoughts.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Okay. Thank you.
No, that's interesting, good. That's why, that's what this meeting's about, so.
Yes.
Excellent. Mr. Sassen, was there anything?
I'm, I'm done.
No, I'm good, good comments, definitely. But I, I can't think of anything else I had to put in.
Okay, I just want to, just, some of this is maybe slightly redundant, but I just wanted, for clarity, make sure I understand. So although we, you know, obviously have a robust tree preservation ordinance right now, we think by making these changes that you've proposed, that, one, we can continue to recognize the property owner's rights, as, as Mark said earlier, but, two, would try to, these changes are intended to incentivize the keeping of larger class-one trees. And class-one typically is, when I look through it, is a lot of the natural trees to the area.
Yes, they're native.
Native trees, thank you, it's a better word, thank you. Okay.
Yes, they have a higher survival rate. So class, class-ones are native, and then class-two, three, and four is when you start getting further away, and they're harder to, harder, not as likely to survive.
Okay, right, right. And then, in addition, we should, it doesn't look like comparing us to surrounding cities, at least, at least a handful of surrounding cities, that this is going to make us, make developers leave Friendswood and go develop other places, that it's not so onerous. That was the balance you were trying to reach in your subcommittee?
Yes, we didn't want to turn development away, but we wanted them to definitely do a, you know, take a second look before just clearcutting a lot.
Perfect.
Yeah, and, I mean, my, my response to that is, if you look at the current ordinance, I mean, the developments of 501 versus 1401, 1401's a gas station. So those are two very different type of developments, but yet, the cost was pretty much the same with the, the current, the current zoning, or current plan. So I think that this gives us something that definitely moves towards protecting the trees, and it also targets the trees that we want to have in our city. So at the same time, protecting, like we said, the, the rights of those developers. the, uh, the rights of those developers, so, landowners.
So to say it just another way, is, when we, when the committee looked at it, we saw Friendswood was at a step. I mean, our, our, our rules were very, very lax. Uh, we didn't want to become severe, and we didn't want to become over the top. And so I think we've moved it much of the way back to where at least someone will think twice before they start clear cutting lots. And that was the goal.
Okay. Anything else before we move to the next item?
Oh, I would like to ask the timing going forward on this now. So we've got some minor corrections that I think can be made by staff. We may want to have the subcommittee kind of bless them, but I'm, I'm guessing there won't be much controversy on that. So what would be the timing for presenting this for a formal vote by, by this body and then on to city council? How does that work?
Uh, so our plan was to advertise the public hearings, uh, the week of July 19th. So that would put, um, the, our first regular meeting in August would be our public hearing and recommendation. And then it would be on council's agenda for September for public hearing, and then October for second reading.
Okay, so the goal is to get it in front of city council by September, or, or the first meeting in September, the, the meeting in September. And then, assuming they approve it, it would be codified in October.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And so by the July 19th date, have all changes finalized too? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, then, um, like I said, our public hearing on it would be, uh, August 8th.
I think 8th is the right date.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, August.
Oh, 12.
12th is our first regular meeting.
So that's when we would formally address this and presumably approve it, okay?
And, and vote on it, our recommendation to city council.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Good, that's a good question. Okay, our next discussion topic is the Proposed Amendments to Appendix C. And by the way, everybody bear with me, this is a long title, so we're just going to go for it. Uh, Proposed Amendments to Appendix C Zoning Ordinance, Section 7P6, Permitted Use Table to Allow NAICS Use 523 Insurance Carriers and Related Activities, NAICS 541 Professional Scientific and Technical Services, NAICS 551 Management of Companies and Enterprises. Oops, make sure I get this right, 551. And 561 Administrative and Support Services as permitted in the Industrial Zoning District. And amend Section 8, 1, 2. Is that?
Aye.
Aubrey? Aye, thank you, thanks. My bad. Section 8I2, uh, Perimeter Landscaping and Screening to Allow the Commission to Consider Alternate Screening Plans to Use Interior, uh, Plans for Uses Interior to a Common Development, Section 8JC Lighting and Glare to Increase the Foot Candles Allowed Interior to Common Developments, Section 7.5 Community Overlay District, uh, COD Boundaries to Reduce the COD Boundary on FM 2351 to 150 feet from Beamer Road to Clear Creek, and Section 20 Definitions to Add a Definition of Common Development.
Okay.
Thank y'all for writing all that, wow.
So.
Becky?
Somebody else wrote all that, I broke it down in the slides, so we'll start with the first one. Um, these are proposed ordinance changes following several conversations with the developer. They had come in for, uh, Industry Park Phase 2, well, Phase 1, 2, and 3 Planned Unit Development. Between staff's conversations with them and the commission's conversations with them, and then we even had like a small subcommittee. We think that they can do their development using our existing codes, with us making a few tweaks, them making a few tweaks, and we came to a compromise. Instead of doing the planned unit development, because they still had a lot of holes in their plan, um, that were, we didn't want to jump straight to the PUD. So, um, this is the city's to-do list following all those meetings. The first one is to add some uses in our permitted use table as permitted in industrial zoning. Um, and these four proposed uses, they're kind of incidental to the warehouse uses that they were proposing. Um, so if, you know, having a, an engineering firm or an administrative support company, things like that, in an office attached to a warehouse is something that they would like to see. And staff and the subcommittee didn't really see any issues with it, so, uh, we can go through that one. It's, it's going to be insurance carriers and related activities. Um, Professional Scientific and Technical Services, which encompasses a very broad range of professional services, management of companies, and administrative and support services. Do y'all, do you want to go into any of those? Do you have any questions on any of those?
Are you going to take it one by one?
Yeah, I think we'll do them, we'll break them up, so the uses we'll tackle first.
Commissioner Hinckley?
Yeah, so we, we briefly went over this in our, uh, in our subcommittee meeting. And, uh, you know, we read through it and honestly didn't, did not see any issues with, with these changes, so. So really no other comment for me on this.
Okay. Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, the permitted use table is a very long document with a lot of detail and, and specifically lists for each zoning area what of many, many, many different opti, uh, opportu, uh, options of, of, of facilities can be in there. And so routinely, we'd look at it yearly, and, and they do some little bit of tweaking based on things that have come up. This will be in that category. We looked at these four and thought, in the industrial zone, which is a very small percentage of Friendswood, by the way, um, that this would, these would all work out fine. And I think we all agreed that, uh, this was part of a larger negotiation to eliminate this PUD uh, with, with the developer over there. And, uh, and I think there are some things he's doing too, so I'd like to hear the status of that before we're done, uh, to make sure we're both doing our part to reach this common consensus. But on, on this one, yeah, I, this is just almost in the normal course of business. We would review this and the, and, and update the permitted use table every year, just due to things of this sort.
Okay. Commissioner Carter?
No questions from.
Commissioner Perry?
No comments here, thanks.
And no additional comments by me as well, okay?
Okay, yes, so to answer, um, Rich's question, as far as the, the zoning type issues, uh, the developer was asked to submit a zone change for a portion of their property to go from community shopping center to industrial. And then our portion of that was to allow some of these uses that are allowed in CSC to also allow them in industrial. So they did turn in their application, and now we're working on our permitted use table, so that's this one chunk.
I did have one other, um, point on, they did request, um, consideration of a few other uses. Staff didn't feel like these other uses would fit well in industrial, but I just wanted to run them by you all. And if you think we need to add them as permitted, then we can.
Were they run through the subcommittee?
Yes.
Or is, okay.
Yeah, I think so. So 523 Security, uh, Securities, Commodity Contracts and Other Financial Investments, uh, 525, which is Funds, Trust and Other Financial Vehicles, and 621, which is Medical Offices and Ambulatory Healthcare, um, like doctor's office, dentist's office. And we just felt like they have another property that's on CSC and that they could keep those types of uses in the CSC zoning, that they weren't really a good fit for industrial. So just wanted to point that out.
So those uses are allowed in community shopping, which there is part of this development. They're also going to have sections of community shopping, okay?
Yeah, yes. So they'll have a place, you know, for those types of uses if they get those inquiries, but.
As we said in the subcommittee, I support that. But I did want to check and see how much of a pushback you got from the developer on that. Was he, was he okay with that?
Uh, we did respond to them that staff was not in favor of those changes and, um.
And, and they followed, I mean, they.
Actually, they didn't respond to that one particular topic now that you bring it up.
Probably wasn't a big, strong issue with them.
Yeah, I, I think the, adding the, was it 524, the, the fourth one? Because we had three initially, and then we added a fourth one that they suggested, and.
Yes, we.
We were like, eh, those other ones don't really.
Okay.
Not the same.
Realistically, in the subcommittee, we, you know, these four changes here seemed realistic. The others, we did not feel were that realistic.
But you, I assume that you also felt that those other additions, this weren't a good fit for industrial.
Right.
Correct.
Any other questions on this, this one?
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
So, one of the other requests by the developer was their, their development plan is, it's, um, it's an, an industrial park, um, but it's made up of more than one lot. So the way our code is written, when you buffer, when properties butt up against each other in different zoning districts and things like that, you have to have buffers. Um, they don't want to buffer themselves from themselves, which is understandable. So the proposed change is the commission can si, can consider alternate screening plans for uses interior to common developments. So it's not even saying by right, they don't have to do it, but they can present to you and say, I have building A next to building B, and I don't feel like I need to put a wall between them. And the commission does have the latitude to look at that on a case-by-case situation, is what this would do.
Yeah, for me, for me, I felt that, uh, given, given the commission the, the chance to review that and make a decision, uh, I think that's, uh, the right way to go on this. That way, um, especially preventing, preventing the need for a special situation down the road.
Commissioner Sassen?
When, when we were discussing this, the, the developer was asking about eliminating all buffering requirements, which, when we went into it, it was mostly the internal sections, which we really don't care about. And so I think we reached a good solution here of, of finding out what they want without throwing away our codes and protecting property owners adjacent to their, their overall development. So I, I think this is the right answer, and I think they finally, they agree with that as well, so I think we're good here.
Commissioner Carter?
I concur with making this exceptions for the, the subcommittee to take a look at it in the future.
Commissioner Perry?
This is where we put in the, uh, alternate screening plans commission may consider, right? That's what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
So my notes here, I just questioned, it's not that I don't support that number four in there. I, I do, because I, I do think that this is a good compromise, especially in this circumstance or others that might come up. What I, what I can't see is what evaluation criteria would we use as commissioners to evaluate whether or not their proposal is sound and sufficient? So here's another one where I'm throwing a poke in a hole, but not sure I've got a recommendation for it. So as a commissioner, if I'm looking at, uh, a common development, which we do define, um, that's now definition, what would I evaluate on whether or not we're doing the right things? The only thing I can start to think about is whether or not, uh, they subdivide that lot, and then now we've got no screening requirements, so, and, and those seem pretty rare to me in my mind, so maybe it's okay, but.
I think, Mark, the thinking was, if they owned both sides of the property.
Yes.
And they don't put screening in, there's nobody damaged. The screening is intended to protect third parties who are now having a development next to their, their property and suddenly being exposed to this. But if they do both sides, and they don't put screening in, well, maybe they've diminished the value of their property, but that's their problem. Uh, and it's not affecting outside, you know, o, owners that, 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 you know, shouldn't be impacted.
Okay, um, what about buffering between CSC and light and industrial? Would that still apply? Or in this case, since they're all together?
Well, mostly this is all industrial, but there is some space where we have CSC, and those I believe still are in place.
No, this, the, this change would allow them, if their development includes the two, they don't want to buffer between themselves.
Right.
So the commission would still have the latitude, if, if it's a warehouse up next to a warehouse, probably not too big of an issue. Um, if they have the front door of a Class A office building facing a rear bay door of a tire shop.
Yeah.
You may think, even though those are both your properties.
Okay.
You know, they still deserve a little bit of protection.
Okay.
So it will be, um, subjective by the commission.
Yeah, no, and those are the hard ones, and that's why we're sitting here, is you do your homework and then you go and figure out where you stand on it, and then likely get convinced otherwise when we're here. Um, so that would just be one consideration for you, is that if there is guidance that you want to put when commissioners evaluate these things in the future, something for you to potentially put in here or, or not. So that was my only comment here. Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm okay, thanks.
Okay, well, all my comments have already been said, so not to spend more time saying the same thing.
Okay, um, and the subcommittee will look at if we need to throw some extra language in there or if we want to keep the flexibility or what, we'll run through that, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Um, okay, so the next one is similar, except it's in regards to lighting and glare. Our current code requires at the property line, no more than one foot candle, uh, lighting shed. Uh, unless it's residential, then that's decreased. But as far as commercial goes, industrial goes, it's one foot candle. So same thing, if they own two properties next to each other, they're developed as a, as a common development, they want to be able to increase the lighting on the interior of their properties, uh, mainly for security reasons. A lot of their target market is going to be warehousing and things like that, storage units. So they want brighter lights on the inside of their development. So as long as they don't shed on their exterior neighbors, um, the subcommittee didn't, I don't think we really had too many concerns with it.
Uh, I, I like the security aspect of it, the brighter inner, inner area. And as long as it's not impacting the, uh, the neighboring, uh, neighboring, um, developments, I, I did not see an issue with it, so that's where I stand on it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sassen, Commissioner Carter?
I'm good, she, she answered my question, thanks.
Okay, um, next.
Nothing additional, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so this one, um, this property, this development as a whole is, is in industrial use. And this portion of the city is mainly industrial, and the opposite side of the road is not in the city limits. Um, so our community overlay district is meant to, to beautify our major thoroughfares and our entrances to the city, and it extends 300 feet to any property within three, within 300 feet of the major thoroughfare. So it's not a straight line at 300 feet, but if any portion of the property is within 300 feet, then you have enhanced landscaping requirements, screening requirements. Um, for the industrial park, they were having a really hard time with the amount of landscaping, uh, especially islands and buffers. And once you get that far back, 300 feet off the road, you can't see back there anymore, and, um, they have some existing very old buildings that are in front of their development that would hide things, so. Originally, um, I think they did not want those requirements to apply. Um, the compromise is the requirements are still going to apply, but it's only going to extend to 150 feet. And it's only going to be from the section of 2351 from Beamer Road to Clear Creek. We're still going to get the nice landscaping up and down the road, but it's not going to extend to the insides of the industrial developments. So I think that's probably the biggest proposal, um, that we threw around. Rich, Tom?
Commissioner Hinckley?
I did, I didn't really have any objection to this. Um, I think it's, I think it's a good compromise to, to bring a good development to the area, so it's.
Yeah, we thought this area was kind of unique, uh, compared to the rest of Friendswood, um, with the industrial nature of it. And, uh, it, it seemed like a good compromise, and it made this whole thing kind of work, so I, I support this.
Commissioner Carter?
I concur, it's a reasonable compromise.
Commissioner Perry?
Uh, what, where I had question here was the, the trouble, and maybe I'm mischaracterizing this, you probably said it better than I can. The trouble is that, not necessarily 150 versus 300 feet, it's that if anything encroached in there, the whole track got included in it. Right, so that was the issue, but you chose to address it by changing the setback from 300 to 150, so, um, why not, why not just make it apply, but only to the first 150 feet of 100, of 300 feet or some other way? Maybe it's the same, maybe it's the same result, but.
I think the concern was, now you're affecting all of Friendswood? And, and how does, what are the unintended consequences throughout the city of, of affecting everybody else in terms of, do you partially?
Okay, but.
Do a lot? So I, I think we just didn't want to open that can of worms. And this made the solution for where we were interested in kind of solved.
Yeah, but everyone was under 300 feet before this. 300 feet was standard on our future land use map.
Right.
We put 300 feet, right?
Yeah, but this is community overlay district, so it's an overlay on top of our regular zoning.
Yes.
For increased landscaping, facades, and things like that.
Uh, okay, so I'm mixing some things up.
Yeah.
Um...
The, the, like, typical depths of our other commercial zoning?
Yes.
Is 300 feet, like, 300 to 500 feet.
Okay. So on that part of town, if we were going to put a new commercial development that was 300 feet deep, they would only be required 150 feet of landscaping.
From Beamer to Clear Creek?
Right, in that area.
Yes, it would just be the 150 feet adjacent to 2351 would be the heavier landscaping. And then once you pass that, then it would be the standard landscaping.
Of 300 feet.
The property that, like, um, the properties that you're talking about are still zoned, Community Shopping Center? So some of those other requirements still apply that are he- that are, um, more stringent than industrial zoning.
Okay.
So it is a compromise, because there are some industrial properties that come all the way to the road. And applying increased landscaping and, um, aesthetics on industrial properties doesn't really... And that's the whole, like, the whole panhandle, it's the industrial, you know, it's mostly all industrial. And so it just, they conflict with each other.
Because an- another 150 feet of flowers is hard to do. That sounds sarcastic, man, I realize that, but...
They, um, they were having a hard time with the landscape islands and the percentages. Um, it cuts into their, into their yards.
Like for storage and warehousing, where they just have the buildings, it's not really like a parking lot, it's a storage facility. Which, storage facilities are not allowed in CSC, but they are allowed in industrial.
Uh-huh.
So, like I said, they're, they conflict with each other.
Right. And another artifact here is most, most of those lots that are already developed, but they're older properties are probably about 150 feet?
Yes.
Already.
They are. A, a good sized commercial tract is usually 150, 200 feet deep, um, because they want that, they want that frontage, they want that visibility. Um, industrial usually goes further back, and they have big, they have larger tracks. So the problem with the way the current ordinance is written is if that industrial tract, if any, if it falls anywhere in the COD, then the whole thing is subject to it. So this makes only the front 150 feet subject to it. And I, I understand what you're saying about why not just make it a straight 300, um, but it, it starts cutting into the industrial, and like Aubrey said, they just, the industrial conflicts with that heavier landscaping.
Okay.
So this, we thought it was a good compromise, because this still protects, um, our entryways. Uh, it still looks pretty on the street, and then they don't have to worry about 18-wheelers hopping curbs and things in the back when they?
Okay.
Try and landscape back there.
Thanks for the explanation.
And for those not familiar with this area, that, that is currently oil field out there. It has been for, for many, many, many years. And as that oil field production decreases, they're looking at other uses for this property. So we're trying to, as much as we can, I think, incentivize this development in a very hard area to develop. Uh, and as I think, Aubrey, you said it, on the right, on the other side, or maybe it was Becky, but on the other side of 2351, that's, um, unincorporated Harris County. And there's, there's no requirements like this, so we're still going to have at least 150 feet of something that's upgraded as they enter Friendswood, but we can't control anything on the other side. So it's kind of unique in that way as well, two unique aspects of this. Okay. No, I think it's, I think this, this makes perfect sense as a way to help develop that area. Next?
Okay, so since we added these requirements for common developments, we added a definition for common development. This definition, it, oh, and I didn't put it on the slide, it's in y'all's backup material. Um, so the definition is based off of the definition of business establishments that is already existing in our sign ordinance. Um, the proposed language is common development means a development consisting of two or more interrelated business establishments using common driveways and onsite parking facilities, including but not limited to shopping centers, office complexes, office buildings, and business parks. So if you're developing more than one tract, inter, you know, multiple buildings, all interrelated together on a common development plan, then that's a common development.
Commissioner Hinckley?
I have no comments on this.
Mr. Sassen, Mr. Kerner, Commissioner Perry?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, don't be.
This, this is where I started to get wrapped up around the axle.
Okay.
Because when you talk about interrelated business establishments, a strip center is all zoned, ti- typically they're all zone one type, right?
Sure.
Um, but they're interrelated business establishments. But in, in some of these cases, you might have a CSC right next to a light industrial, and are we drawing any distinctions about requirements between the two of those?
No, and that's the intent. We don't, we don't want to distinguish between those. We want, regardless of what the zoning is, if it's developed as a whole?
Yes.
We consider that a common development, because they don't, if the same guy, developer, is developing six lots, three of them are zoned CSC and three of them are zoned industrial, but he's got it all on one plan, everything's going to match, he doesn't want the screening requirements between his industrial and his CSC properties. He doesn't want to screen himself from himself.
So why do they need to be interrelated business establishments? Why is that, why is that relevant? If you're going to allow a business developer to come in and do a development on multiple zoned, um, lots? Why, why protect them from themselves at all by calling it interrelated businesses? They don't have to be related, I guess, is my argument.
Well, so it's based on the, the definition of a business establishment that's in the sign ordinance. And that is, a business establishment is a project or undertaking that involves the use of one lot with buildings or structures for the primary purpose of conducting a commercial enterprise or other non-residential use, um, yada, yada, yada. Multiple services and/or goods offered by a business establishment shall be considered one business establishment. The common development is saying two or more business establishments. So basically, multiple businesses, multiple?
Okay.
Structures.
So I'm, I'm keying in on interrelated, and maybe it's not.
Okay.
Another, I think another example of a common development would be Vergata Commons.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they have the two strip centers, you've got Chick-fil-A, you've got Chipotle, all of that. Um, the end of that is zoned OPD, and then the rest of that's zoned CSC, which the zoning ordinance doesn't require any screening between those two uses, because they're both commercial. Um, so there was no requirement there, but that, I think, would be a common development, is all of those.
And I'm also getting your point about interrelated. Why did, why do we need to put, what is interrelated providing us? How's it helping the definition?
Okay, so we can...
That's something you ought to discuss in the subcommittee.
Yeah, and we can talk about, well, we can talk about striking that, and I'll look at some other...
Anything that simplifies it is a good thing, and, and that may be appropriate.
No, it's a good ca- it's...
That's how I should have started out, is I need it as simple as possible, yeah.
Well, we may need to... As one development activity, which is, I thought with that interrelated meant, based on what you've said, that's what the interrelated meant. It's on, the light's on. Thank you for... Am I not speaking loud enough? Maybe I'm not close enough to the microphone. That's probably the problem. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Well, I, I think the intent wa- well, I can tell you what, I know the intent was, because I wrote it. Um...
Well, what you said, it was a common development, even though it was different, um, business establishments within that common development.
Correct.
That's how I interpreted interrelated to mean, and that sounds like it was interpreted differently. So probably needs some clarification.
Right, yes, because business, business establishments using common driveways, that doesn't mean that it's the same developer. So that's why the interrelated was in there, I mean, being they have some relationship to each other within the, within the development. But I, yes, I understand.
Take a deeper dive into it.
Yes.
To clarify what that means, if it's a, a common developer?
Yes.
Or if it's just sharing of the, um, the driveways and whatnot?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that one.
Well, the interrelated can mean that it has, it could relate to it having an effect on each other, not necessarily that they work together, they have an impact on each other. And that could be related to the, uh, the, uh, traffic flow and such being on, uh, common property.
But if some people were confused by it, we need to just kind of look at it and see if there's a way to, can make it as simple as possible.
Yes, we don't, we don't want to have to add definitions for our new definition. So we'll, we'll take a look at it, um, and we'll run that through the subcommittee, and then we'll run it through, uh, Mary Kay.
Okay.
Okay, I think, I think that was the last one on there. Did we have any questions over any of the proposed changes, other than the couple of notes we've got, and go from there?
No.
Good?
We've been talking about this for a while, so...
I know. I know. Okay.
The only question I would have is the timing again, what, what, how do, how does this all kind of roll out?
Same as the tree ordinance.
So it should be in sync, sync with that.
Yes, sir.
Which means pretty quickly, we need to get these little nits straightened out?
Yes, sir.
And then have formal wording for the next mea- the, the next, the meeting that you have the, well, for the, for the newspaper, uh, which is, I guess, the critical path.
Yes, and then, um, Industry Part Two also submitted their zone change to change their CSC to industrial. So their zone change will be going through simultaneously with these changes.
If those are lined up, that makes everything simple.
Yes.
Yes, sir. We'll get this taken care of next week. That way, the newspaper and all that can go out the following week.
And I just want to say thanks to the staff and everybody who worked on this to try to eliminate a, a PUD that would have just basically thrown out the rules of Friendswood and, and replaced them with a new set of rules, and it would have been, it would have been ugly. And so we've done a lot of work to eliminate this PUD. Now we have setups of, assuming this all goes through, a set of rules that any developer can follow and, and should be, should be, uh, and able to, let somebody to see what they really need to do to develop Friendswood. So in our effort to eliminate or to minimize number of PUDs, this is a, a victory. And, and so I think this is, this is good, and took a lot of hard work from a lot of people. Appreciate that.
Well said.
So I just realized I'm missing a slide. Um, the next agenda item, Mr. Chairman, you're on 5C.
Oh, right. So I'd make, but you're done with 5B?
Yes, sir, I'm done.
Okay. Okay, our next discussion item is regarding the 2021 liaison schedule for the Planning and Zoning Commission and Subcommittee assignments. Aubrey, am I doing that, or are you?
Um, you can. I actually printed copies for everybody, and I left them sitting up there on the printer.
Well, that's gonna, yeah, that's gonna make it a little bit harder.
I'll email out the new schedule.
Well, we have a proposed schedule that we're going to present and then get feedback. Uh, that's what we're looking for, correct? Okay, so I'm going to have to look at both of them. Thanks for punning. Good job. I shouldn't have posed it as a question.
Never ask.
Yeah, right, right. So right now, one of our liaison, on our liaison schedule, uh, we have one to City Council, that's currently myself. Uh, we're proposing to, to keep that, uh, the same. Then the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, uh, right now, we have, uh, let's see, Dick Clark and Richard Sassen. We are proposing, and we'll teach them not to, not to come to the meeting, Dick Clark and Travis Mann. So that's what we're proposing. Then the next is Construction Board of Adjustment Liaison, uh, that is co- currently, Tom, that's you, right? Or is it, it's going to be, let's put it that way. If it's not you, it's going to be. And we're proposing that. Uh, then that's the construction board that you go to anyway, because you're an alternate. So I thought, maybe you'd been a liaison.
I don't necessarily go there.
Well, understood. When they, when, when and if they ever meet, uh, they meet as needed. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, uh, that's currently you. We're proposing, uh, Commissioner Kerner, we're proposing you for that. Uh, it meets infrequently, uh, as needed. But again, you're going to get this, um, Aubrey's going to pass all this out?
Yes.
Uh, for you, but just as a discussion topic. We are going to eliminate our liaison to keep Friendswood beautiful, uh, based on the other committees that we have to, or the other boards that we have to liaison to. We're going to add back Friendswood, uh, Downtown Economic Development Corporation. Nope, nope, sorry, we, we did have that. Mark, that was you. We're proposing, Tom, for that to be you.
That's fine.
Since you never meet for the CBOA, or so far. And then, oh, this, that's the one we're adding, the CEDC, Community and Economic Development Corporation. Uh, Mark, we'd like you to take that one, if that's okay.
Uh, when, when is that? Is that, did that move to after hours, or is it still in the...
They're, um, afternoons at 4 o'clock?
Okay.
The first Wednesday of the month.
Every month?
That's, that's a problem, that's, that's why we're here. We're discussing it and see if, if, if that's acceptable.
I mean, if it's outside, it's when I met with, if it's when we met with them last time, I think it would work out.
They used to meet at 8:30 in the morning.
Right.
And then they moved it to 3:30, and now it's 4:00.
Okay.
So they were trying to get it to the end of the day to allow it, you know, to make it easier for people to get there.
Okay, and they're agenda-driven now?
Yes.
Okay. Great, yeah, no problem.
They have several new members, I think, new focus.
Right.
Um, so...
Okay, I came from this subcommittee, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Right, no, no, and I think you've been, it, it's changed enough, uh, since then, we thought it would be a good fit.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
We'd appreciate that.
Okay, sure.
Uh, then we're going to, uh, Commissioner Sassen would then become an alternate for all of these liaisons. So if you weren't able to make it?
Oh, that's a good idea.
And then he could kind of fill in, uh, or try to, if you, if the normal liaison can't make it.
Sure. My, my schedule has become pretty crazy in the last few weeks with my medical issues, but I'm also fairly flexible too, so it allows me to, you know, I'm retired, so I, I should be able to pick up for people if they can't make it.
Okay, so we also took a look at our subcommittees, the two, um, standing subcommittees that we have. One is the Planning Subcommittee, and right now, what we're proposing is, uh, that would be Commissioner Perry, Commissioner Mann, and Commissioner Clark would be on that. And right now, I guess, uh, Commissioner Perry, you're leading that, you would continue on if you could so do that.
That's your desire, sure.
Uh, yeah, doing a great job. Our other standing committee?
Just to interject, when, when it was suggested that we changed that, both Aubrey and Becky got pale. And so they really wanted you, uh, and, and to stay on that.
I think it was probably for different reasons.
The idea of not having you guys on there and continuing through with what's the good work you've been doing to...
No, no, that's, that's exactly, they did kind of go pale on that, so appreciate your work on that, especially with the future land use map, especially in the...
Okay.
That's great. Uh, the other standing committee is the Ordinance Subcommittee, that, um, Richard Sassen, you are the current lead. Um, you're the, no, no, you're the designated as the lead, but temporarily, um, Commissioner Hinckley is taking over those duties, uh, as you address the, the medical concerns. So right now, we're proposing to keep that the same, where you'd be doing that, and Commissioner Kerner, you'd be on that committee. We're proposing that. And that's the Ordinance Subcommittee.
Yep, I'd love to do that.
A dream team.
Perfect. So that's, 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 that bit of housekeep, that bit of housekeeping is, anybody have any serious concerns?
None.
And we'll teach the other two to miss a meeting? Perfect. Okay, our next item is consideration and possible action regarding Future Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting will be Thursday, July 22nd. Um, and we will have a public hearing for the building height ordinance change at that meeting. Um, and then the meeting after that, our first regular meeting in August, is August 12th.
Good. Okay, communications are next. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any general comments, suggestions for future agenda items, any subcommittee updates or updates from your liaison assignments? Since I've been doing it all night, I'll start with you, Commissioner Hinckley.
Well, tonight was pretty much a subcommittee update for us, so, um, I'll get with Becky after this and try to schedule how we're going to get her updates, uh, done before the 19th, and, uh, get, get with the rest of the crew on that. Other than that, no other comments?
Commissioner Sassen, Mr. Kerner, Commissioner Perry?
Uh, to our chair and vice chair, thank you. Learned a lot from you guys, and your leadership is outstanding, so I'm glad you guys decided to make another run at it.
Do we have a choice? I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Do we have a choice?
Yeah, you had a choice.
And he didn't say positive learning.
Yeah, no, he didn't say it right, exactly. Volume over quantity, quality.
Okay, uh, I, I have nothing else to add this evening. Uh, next is our council liaison update, uh, Councilmember Graffon, thank you for attending.
Thank you, commissioners, staff, citizens, and all. Um, I read a report before I came up here, and it was really good news. Um, our collection, sales tax collections, it, from, for, through June, is running or trending 9.9% ahead of our budget, so over our budget. And, uh, thank you all for the... And I thank you all for the ones that are getting our development moving in Friendswood. I mean, you know, you got the Chick-fil-A, our retail centers, those sort of things, they make a big difference. And the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation, I believe they have a budget now over two million dollars. And that three eight cents helps us uh with our roads and everything, so. Um it's just, it was just some good news I wanted to bring up real quick. And I did go to the Commissioners, County, Galveston County Commissioners Meeting that they had last uh, last month. And um really good news there, uh the American Recovery Plan, there's funds there that do not have to be used for COVID. Uh they can be used for infrastructure dollars, public works dollars and for flood mitigation. And uh Galveston County is very interested in working with Friendswood on the thirty million dollar detention bond, uh detention pond at Beamer and uh, and, and Dixie Farm Road. Um we've kind of set out some division of uh some monies for that thirty million dollars and and what it would work out for. Harris County has already agreed with us that that needs to be done and they're ready to move forward with it too. So that's really some exciting news and just thank you all for the service that y'all are providing, Friendswood's moving forward. And you know, a lot of that has to do with you, especially those with the twenty-twenty plan that y'all have been working with. That eighty percent residential, twenty percent commercial, it makes a big difference. And thank you all for everything you're doing, and if you have any questions for me, I'm here.
Right.
Uh Commissioner Griffon, we, we have just updated our liaison schedule, is there an update coming for, uh, with City Council?
This weekend, we are having a, our council um workshop and review for what we hope to, to do over the next year. That will be Saturday morning at eight-thirty, eight-thirty, and they're going to go over all that. And so we'll have all the liaison reports and everything for y'all next time.
Okay, thank you.
So thank, thank you very much. Okay, next are staff updates, Aubrey?
Yes, sir, um the Texas Curbs Ramp and Curbs, Ramps and Sidewalks Project has been delayed somewhat. Initially, it was for materials and now it's for weather. Um so uh that project is delayed somewhat. Um also did, I'm sure everybody knows, the five oh one South Friendswood Drive, the trees uh are being worked on at that property. Um we, our current mitigation requirements apply to that property, not the new ones, since it's already permitted, so um just wanted to make that point.
Was done for the power lines, is that correct, the, the best of our knowledge?
At this point, the, yes, the trimming that's been done on them was for
This week?
Yeah, to get the electrical lines out of them. Um and then uh yeah, they have the building staked out on the property, so you can kind of see where the building is going to go. Um I think with the orange flags, um so that development is moving forward. Um and then also wanted to point out the um, the June DRC report was in the backup material. And then the Texas APA Conference uh is coming up in October, uh twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth, I believe. Um I'll get that information out to you, but if you want to mark your calendars, it's in Fort Worth uh this year. And it's partially virtual and partially in person. Um so I guess they're offering it both ways, I think, but um so we do budget for all the Commissioners to go. So if you're interested and want to.
What were those dates again, sorry?
I believe it's October twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth, but I need to confirm that.
Thank you.
I'll send the link uh for that so you can take a look.
And and let me just add since we're at its, you know, point here, those are great conferences, so those haven't been uh to them, they do a great job on what goes on in planning the zones. They have a, a special track for Commissioners that can go through that helps um make the sense of a lot of what we do. As, as a new Commissioner, if anybody hasn't been, I highly recommend going.
And it's Texas APA, so it's, it's other cities in Texas and what they're doing. And it's, you know, city representatives from other cities giving the presentation, so it's good um networking. And we can kind of find cities that are similar to us and see what they're doing, so it's good.
Okay. Anything else, Aubrey?
Nope, that's it.
Becky?
Uh no, sir, I think for now, the Ordinance Subcommittee is, we're kind of tapped out a little bit, so we're going to sew up these items. We'll get uh new Commissioner Kerner in there to kind of bring her up to speed with where we're at and what we're planning on doing for the year. Um but thank you guys for all your help, that was a lot of work.
No, you're all getting a lot of stuff done, it takes a, a while to get through all this, and so thank you very much, good job. Mary Kay, anything? Okay, the July eighth, twenty-twenty-one Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for attending this evening.